Go ahead.
In accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at 6, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting was provided by the Board Secretary to the Daily Record and published on December 6, 2019, by stating a time, place, and date of all regularly scheduled meetings and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. The copy of this shall be included with the minutes of this meeting. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Yes.
Mr. Paree.
Yes.
Mr. Prasad.
There.
Mr. Reddy.
Present.
Ms. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Willand.
Here.
Chairman Irakine.
Present.
We also have present tonight our board attorney, Mr. Herniak, our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, and our board engineer, Mr. Holloway.
Start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from whose hands our nation under God, indivisible, and ever being just.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public has business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? Please come forward.
Nicholas Homiak, Lake Kailua. Last time I was here, issue of a stormwater questionnaire came up, and one of the architects, or I believe it was the Route 10, 180 apartment proposal alleged, I think his words were, "I know of no questionnaire," or "there is no questionnaire." I have it here, six pages. Planning boards usually apply these rules, but zoning boards are also obligated for major, major changes. This is an accompanying paper that goes with it. Most townships that have environmental commissions invoke all of these criteria. And in the past, a friend of mine at Anjack, he helped me scrutinize some of precipice stormwater ordinances. He did find a discrepancy. I'd like to know whether this board is aware of that discrepancy and if it has been updated for the zoning board or the town engineer. And it exists in Section 225-64L. And I have it here, and it's, I'm trying to get short to save you time. Projects undertaken by any government agency which otherwise meet the definition of major development, but which do not require approval under municipal land use law are also considered major developments. Now, here's the kicker. In precipice Troy Hills, you did adopt such an ordinance that can be found in Section 225-64L under utilities. I would note that the precipice ordinance says that definitions are as found in the DEP rule, but the local definition for major development does not include the impervious surface quarter acre threshold as required by the DEP rule. So unless someone using the local ordinance did not know the DEP rule, it is possible that they might not catch a project that is not disturbing an acre or more, but was installing more than a quarter acre of impervious surface. I think this should be corrected in the ordinance. I'm not sure whether it has or not.
Sir, may I interrupt you for a moment? I apologize. The chairman inquired whether anybody has something to say regarding a matter that is not on the agenda for today. Is the matter that you're addressing on the agenda for today?
No, it's stormwater. I thought I made it very clear in the beginning.
You did it.
Well, nobody, I guess.
With all due respect, we are not, this board, members of the board are not experts in these areas, okay? We depend on experts like Mr. Chadwick, our attorney, our engineer, okay? And the applicant's professionals to bring everything to a head. I don't know what you're talking about. I know what you're talking about in general, but I do not know what you're talking about in specifics. So if you'd like to leave that with Mr. Chadwick and the professionals on this board, I will have them take a look at the whole thing, and maybe you can come back at a future day and we can talk about it. Okay? But...
All right, but after last week, when I was told there was no questionnaire, I have the questionnaire, okay? I have it. I'd like to give it to the board and hope you don't throw it in the trash.
We're not going to throw it in the trash.
All right, I hope not.
Give it to Mr. Chadwick.
I don't believe anybody will throw it in the trash.
And it is not on the agenda.
I would suggest the more direct method of getting this error that your person thinks exists.
It does exist.
That done is to, one, present your findings to the township engineer's office, because they're the ones who are required under the new DEP rules to do the stormwater management ordinance.
All right, the reason I'm here is because I've already done all that. And the only person that I've heard anything from is attorney Jim Lott, who says they were looking into it. And that was a while ago. So now I'm wondering, is there a follow-through? That's the main reason I'm here.
Why don't you go to the mayor's office and tell him about it?
But it does affect the zoning board adjustments for...
Why don't you go to the mayor's office? If this is not available to us, it should be made available via the township administration, right? The mayor should, I mean, they all work for him.
You have to get, let me tell you, you have to get things aligned. It does affect us, but we can't implement something that's not an ordinance. So what you need to move is with the attorney to get it into ordinance form, which then allows the township engineer, who works with his board, to advise us. At this juncture, we just swing it away.
All right, I'll bring it up at the next council meeting, but I thought I was obligated to come back after my experience for last week, and the one gentleman wasn't even familiar with green infrastructure, so that's why I'm back.
If you would please leave that with the board secretary, that would be...
Do you know anything about this?
We investigate every application, whether it's, you'll notice even in the upfront beginning section of the review letters, it'll state whether or not it's a major development. If it's a major development, there's a whole set of rules and regulations that kick in.
So you think we're covered in this?
I think we're covered.
Okay, thank you. Any other member of the public who has any business to be brought to this board that's not on this evening's agenda? I hear none and see none. I think we have some resolutions. 1953, 59, 62, and 58. Are they all the same people?
Yes.
Yeah, I got it here, okay. Uh, Mr., yeah, Mr. Kaplan, you want to move these four resolutions?
Yeah, I'll move to approve these.
These four motions is written?
Second Snyder.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Mr. Kaplan.
Yes.
Mr. Paree.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Irakine.
Yes.
Okay, first one on the agenda tonight is the one that we carried over, and that's our, oh, I'm sorry, there's minutes. Minutes, minutes from October 2, 2019.
Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of October 2, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Mr. Kaplan.
Yes.
Mr. Paree.
Yes.
Ms. Reddy.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Irakine.
Yes.
Okay, first one on the agenda tonight is the one that we carried over, and that's our, oh, I'm sorry, there's minutes. Minutes, minutes from October 2, 2019.
Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of October 2, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's it, resolutions, no correspondence, good. All right, the Whole Foods, Whole Foods application? They're not here?
Yeah, we're here, our zone returns not here.
All right, well, let me, I'll move, let me get the residentials out of the way then, or at least one. Application 1961, Claudia Bartek, 82 Berlin Road, C variances, construction, open deck, fire pit structure, and driveway expansion. Come on forward.
Would you please raise your right hand? You swear that the testimony you're about to give before this board shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. You could please state and spell your name and your address.
Claudia Bartek, C-L-A-U-G-I-A, B-A-R-T-E-K, 82 Berlin Road.
Thank you.
So side yard setback one foot where six is allowed, accessory rear yard fire pit one foot while a 10 is allowed, and we've got some plan and design standards. Yards and courts, open deck, you want 39.68 when 24 is permitted impervious coverage. 42.95 was previously approved on 2011, and you're looking for 55.78. You want to explain a little bit about your property and why you need these variances?
Sure, I'm looking, well, the two that you mentioned in the beginning exist. The side yard, I thought was part of the original variance I had gotten back in 2011. I found out going through this variance that there's a portion of it that's not. So we're trying to make that legit, I guess. The major part is, oh, and the fire pit is a gravel area that I didn't realize required. I didn't, I didn't realize that was considered coverage, so I never came to that.
Does the water drain through the...
Yes.
So you're not, it's not, it's not 100% impervious? It could be, what's the word I'm looking for?
Is it got concrete in the bottom or is it just dirt?
No, it's just dirt with gravel on top, like stones on top.
How about the deck? What is the deck?
The deck doesn't exist yet, that's something I would have built.
How would you plan to build it? Is it going to have the planks with space between them, or are they going to be, is it going to be a solid surface?
The intent would be, it's more like a patio, it's not actually connected to my house, it's going to be built into the ground.
What's it made of?
It will be made of wood. I couldn't tell you whether there's spaces between the planks or not, I don't know the answer to that question. I'm guessing no, or yes.
You're guessing no?
Yes, I'm guessing yes, that would make sense.
Okay.
It's going to be right down on the ground?
Yes.
Could you move the microphone just a bit closer, would you please? We need to make sure.
I'm sorry.
And the last thing, that piece of pavement between your garage and the side line, that's already there.
Correct.
And you did that when you did the garage addition, or something?
Yes, that was part of the driveway, there's a whole 15-foot addition on the front of my entire house that I did back in 2011, and I was here for a variance for that.
Did you discuss this at all with your neighbors? Is there any issues with your neighbors? Any complaints by them about, you know, you throw wild parties out in the backyard or anything like that?
No, I do not. I'm a single mother of four children.
Throw the beer cans into their backyard or anything?
Yeah.
And you have a 40 by 100 lot, which I am guessing in an R4 is a substandard lot, right, Mr. Chadwick? Should be 6,000 square feet as a minimum. So if you had a 6,000 square foot lot, you would not be here, which you probably could have, with that extra 20 feet of width, you probably wouldn't need variances or de minimis variances.
Okay. I was not aware of that, I mean, obviously I bought the property that way.
I'm just bringing that up as, you know, why we do things the way we do it.
Is there a way, so...
But I don't...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just, to continue to answer your question, I don't have an outdoor space. There's no front porch, deck, anywhere. So I'm just looking to build a deck to enjoy some outdoor space with my family. Table, chairs, barbecue kind of thing.
So we granted a variance to allow 42.95% impervious coverage. Do we know, is there a way to see what it was prior to that? I'm curious as to how much over 55% really is, other than, more than half the property.
It's basically the deck and that shaded piece of driveway.
I might have that.
Did you own the house in 2011?
Yes.
When the last, when the last variance was granted?
Yes, I applied for that variance myself. I had just bought it in 2010.
And that's when you put the garage on and that other part?
Correct.
Okay. What's that striped triangle on the...
Answer your question, that part, the two front parts, that's the addition back then.
Say that again?
All right, so the garage and the deck porch out in front?
Yep.
That was part of the earlier application.
And now the...
That moved her up to 49% impervious coverage.
Yeah, so 42, but what is allowed there?
Yeah, now the deck in the back is adding another...
What's allowed?
What was allowed there before? How much of a variance did we give?
Originally 40%.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
40% originally.
Thank you.
That's what, that's what the zoning says. So she's 15% over, 15% of 4,000 square feet is 600 feet over.
What's in back of you? There's a home, same size lot. There's homes on both sides of me and behind me exactly is a home, and then a home on either side of that. I'm concerned about the water runoff.
The deck you're proposing, it looks like it's got a little bump-out part. What's, what's, what's the design?
I was hoping to put a hot tub on top of that bump-out part.
And the triangle in the corner with the lines, what is that?
That's that fire pit area, that's gravel.
Oh, that's the gravel.
Along that, is there, are there hedges? Is there a tree on the neighbor's property with sparks off the fire, start to ignite something? What's the proximity of anything in that area? Because you've got that fire pit right on the property line of three other properties.
Um, there's, there's a tree on my property. Behind me, I don't think there's a tree on his property.
Bushes, a shed, anything we can't see that might be there?
Just a fence.
Wooden fence?
Yes. Wooden fence by a fire pit?
How big is this fire pit? I mean, is it the size of an ashcan? Big?
Well, it's not, it's, the, the, the triangle space is, is not the fire pit. I have a little portable fire thing, $30 Walmart thing that I set on there that has the fire, and we sit around it on this gravel space.
What would you guess the setback would be from, from the back and side? If you were to put it down, how many feet is it from either side of your property lines?
The fire pit itself, are you telling me?
The, in, whatever word I'm looking for, the mark, your light. Yeah, if you say you have a small thing, you put it, when you set it down on that triangle, how many feet is it from either?
I'd have to guess eight.
At least six?
Oh, at least six, yeah.
So that's not really, because that, within six, so you got a six-foot setback, so you're okay there.
You don't put it up next...
And like I said, it's, it's a little thing, and sometimes I'm...
You don't put it up next to the fence, you put it out?
Oh, absolutely not. No, 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 no. I'm, I...
So if you've been doing that now, why do you need to do this thing right to your property line?
Does she just want to use it?
Well, this triangular piece I built because I cleared rocks off my property.
That's already there.
And I couldn't get rid of them somewhere, so I made it, I made an area that I can set this fire pit thing on and not have to get rid of all these rocks, so...
So you've used it over the years and there's been no problems?
Totally, it's been there for 10 years.
10 years. Okay.
I just didn't know I needed a variance because I thought it...
I wouldn't have guessed you would have needed a variance either, but...
Okay.
So I'm not getting the eight-feet part. How big is that triangular pad there?
Well, if you look to scale, it's about a third of the, the, the top piece is about a third over from the property line, so a third of 40 feet is 13, and assuming that it's equidistant, 13 on the other side, the cross piece is a squared plus b squared equals c squared, right?
You're impressive. You're impressive.
I don't know how to square, 340. 340 what? What is the square feet?
What's the square root of 340?
Yeah, right, exactly.
Somebody's got it.
And that's, that thing, that triangle is just a gravel area, it's not a fire pit. I just happened to set my fire pit over there because I think it's safer than putting it on the grass. I, I don't, I'm not sure how to explain this correctly.
I, I understand perfectly what you're saying.
You want to make sure it's a proper distance away from the wooden fence.
169, 169, 18, 15, 358, square root of 358. Well, we know how big that, that thing is, 13 by 13 is 169, 169, so it's half of that. The piece, the piece that we're talking about is 170, 179 feet, 179 square feet. And you're saying this thing is only this big?
Slight exaggeration.
So we have a thing that's maybe two feet in diameter, sitting in a triangle, that's 179 square feet, okay?
And it, this thing sits in the...
You don't put it against the fence, you don't put it against your neighbors?
This is the triangle, it sits right here in the front and it sits around it behind it.
It's a, it's a de minimis situation.
Yes.
And you've been doing it for 10 years.
You've been doing it for 10 years.
Correct.
And how many times a year do you do it?
Just in the nice weather. I would guess, I don't know, 20, 30 times in a summer.
The rocks you put in there, they're not set in concrete, right? They just sit in the ground?
No, no, it's just gravel.
Okay, so the water goes through?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I think they use that as a...
Does that cover that triangle and the fire pit? Everybody understands that?
Yep.
Good. Now, let's talk about Snyder's question about runoff. If we made one of the conditions of granting debt, you would check with the township engineer to make sure you do not create any additional runoff that might affect your neighbors. Can you live with that?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure what that means, but I'm willing to talk to them.
Well, okay, you know, when we grant variances, we're, we're creating impervious coverage where there was grass or dirt, and that's, that's, there's drainage that goes through that, okay, once you, once you can't drain through that, and that's one of the questions that Mr. Chadwick had, if you were doing the planks with the space, that would be semi-impervious because there will be some water that will go through, maybe all of the water will go through and down, okay?
Yeah.
So what I'm saying is that to avoid any issues with your neighbors after you put this deck in, because you've got a, a small piece of property, we would just want to make sure that the engineer approves whatever is done here so that there is no runoff onto your neighbor's property.
Okay.
Okay, you can live with that, okay. Does that, does that make you happy, Ms. Snyder?
No, it shouldn't make the whole board happy, not just me, yes.
Well, you were going to ask the question, Ms. Snyder, that's why I said that, okay.
I was asking a simple question, which way does your lot tilt? If you're in the back of the property, is that high in the front?
It tilts, so if that, if that triangular piece is over here, you're looking at the back of the property, it tilts to the back corner. Like, if there's a really heavy rain, there's, I get water draining that way.
Toward the back of the property?
Correct, back corner.
Is that in the corner where the fire pit is or the other one?
No, the other one.
The other corner, okay. Well, he may make, made a little swell or something. There's bushes back there, right?
No.
No, the bushes stop, I see.
There's no bushes there.
Well, that's fine, I mean, we can, I'm happy to talk to them. You understand our concerns, we want to make sure we're doing the right thing for everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, and any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening?
Just for the record, why the expansion of the driveway? The judge expand, want to expand the driveway?
Um, that's a good question. I put my garbage cans over there and I...
Does it allow you to park more cars, more cars off the street?
No, it's more of a pathway to the back of my house.
So it's not really, it's more like a walkway than a driveway?
Correct. It just happens to be driveway material.
You're dealing with a 40, a 40-foot wide walk. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear and see none. Someone like to make a recommendation? Mr. Dave Summitt?
Maybe one of them.
Motion to go into conference?
Senator Snyder.
Is there a second?
Captain.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, who wants to start?
I'll start.
I just have concerns that we are at more than half the property covered imperviously, and I understand that that deck is up for debate about how pervious it actually is, but we're covering, we're, we're a tremendous amount of this property, and I'm not hearing a true need. But to me, that's, that's where the issue is for me. There's not a need to pave 105 square foot to put some trashcans. There's not a need for a massive deck so we can have a whirlpool. With all due respect to the homeowner, and I get it, you want to make your property exactly what you want, the impervious coverage is, is an issue for me, and that's what's going to cause me to vote no.
Yeah, I'm, you know, my main concern was the water runoff, but yeah, I do have a concern in regards to the expansion of this impervious coverage. This resident wants to enjoy their property, I, I'm going to be voting yes on this, provided she meets the requirements needed for the water runoff.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Um, I understand the size of the property, and I understand she wants to get the enjoyment out of her property, that I think she's entitled to, so I'm in favor of the application with the provisions we talked about.
She'll vote all the way over down on the right. Mr. Prasad?
I will support this application in view of, it will help the owner to enjoy her place, her property, and live more comfortably with her family.
Mr. Reddy?
I'm in favor of this application for the benefit of the family, since it is R4 district and it is a smaller unit for the privacy of the homeowners and the bedroom and enjoyment of the homeowners. It is a good application, and especially with respect to impervious coverage, since they are putting, they're not making like blocks of this one, they are using gravel kind of thing, so, and the deck part also, if they use like a text material, you know, most of the water can be subsidized, so I'm in favor of this.
Schoons?
You have the one condition, I would, you didn't answer to my satisfaction any of the, the impervious coverage of the deck material. So can we have a stipulation in here that the town engineer or somebody else does agree that the way you're putting that in would be, would be able to filter water through? In other words, it won't be solid? Because I, I don't think you answered that question for me to my side.
Sure, I don't have a design yet, so that's why I couldn't answer your question.
So when you have a design, it has to be designed so the water can flow.
I'm fine with that.
You want a space, you want a space between the...
Absolutely, that's fine.
And that, they, they have, I think, like spacers that are open?
Yes, they do.
And, and they're, they're not solid, but they'll, they'll give you a solid look.
And allow the water.
I'm in favor of this application, it's not any, any different than maybe 100 of them that we've previously heard. Um, it was, oh, Mr. Burke, you can't vote, but do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Kaplan here, that I, I feel it's overuse of the property, and if I, my vote counted, I would have said no.
Okay. Motion to come out of conference?
Senator Snyder.
Is there a second?
Second, ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, would someone elect to firm a resolution?
I will do it.
Thank you.
Application number 19:61, Claudia Bartek, 82 Berlin Road, block 273, lot 9, zone R-4 to issue or grant a C variance to construct the open deck, fire pit structure, and driveway expansion contract to Section 430-35, column 8, 9, and 13. Also, Section 430-275... Also, section four thirty dash two seventy-five, ten, and section four thirty dash ten, dash I. Uh, with stipulated and all the agreements that she has to go through the board engineer's approval prior to do any upgrades on this property. Other ones?
Any discussion? Laura, call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
No.
Mr. Perique?
No.
Mr. Passad?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Willins?
Yes.
Chairman Ericam?
Yes. Results of the variances are granted. Uh, we will memorialize this, you know... Uh, we will memorialize this at our second meeting in April. I'm sorry, second meeting in March. Okay, and then you'll be free to get permits after that.
So, do I get something in writing that says it's okay with these stipulations, or...
You will. You will. After our next meeting, we'll have a resolution, and you'll get a copy of that, and you'll get your zoning permit. Then you, if you need building permits, you apply for the building.
Okay.
Good luck.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, now, we're, is, um, Whole Foods here?
Thank you for trying to accommodate us earlier at the top of the meeting. I was caught in a little traffic.
Excellent. You may proceed.
This application is for a sign, um, that needs two variances. Um, the sign is proposed at, uh...
Counsel, did you want to place your name on the record?
Sure, sorry. My name is David Kenny. I'm attorney with Snyder and Snyder. I'm here tonight representing the applicant's CAD signs on behalf of Whole Foods. Again, this application is for a sign proposed at the Whole Foods at Waterview Marketplace, which is at thirty Waterview Boulevard. The application, as stated earlier, is, is for a sign to be on the wall of the Whole Foods. Um, it's on the western entrance of the Whole Foods. If you're staring at the Whole Foods building, it's the left entrance. Uh, the sign, it requires two variances. Um, the sign is proposed at two hundred and twenty-five point six square feet. Um, town code requires a maximum one hundred and fifty square feet. Um, it also says that the sign cannot be more than twenty-five feet from the ground. Um, the sign proposed is thirty-one feet from the ground. Uh, we have submit, uh, submitted a planning report from our professional planner, David Karlebach. We'll be calling him up tonight to discuss the planning benefits for granting these variances, um, for the proposed sign. Uh, we've also received comment letters from the board's planner and the board's engineer. Um, there was no substantive comments in either of their comment letters. Uh, they just requested that we put, uh, on the record the testimony that was included in our planner's report.
Could you please raise your right hand? You swear that the testimony you're about to give before this board shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God.
I do.
State your name and spell it for the record, please.
David Karlebach, K-A-R-L-E-B-A-C-H.
Mr. Karlebach, are all your licenses currently in force?
Yes.
Have you appeared before this board?
Yes, I have.
Any objections to accepting Mr. Karlebach as an expert? Excellent, please.
Mr. Karlebach, could you please go over some of the planning benefits for why the size, uh, the sign proposed needs to be larger than the town code's requirement and a little bit taller than the town code's requirement?
Certainly. Uh, I just want to give a little bit of background, just so we're clear on what's being proposed. Um, essentially, the application is to remove a temporary sign that already exists at the site and replace it with permanent sign. Uh, that sign is the westerly entrance. Uh, the new sign is going to measure three feet, ten inches in height by fifty-eight feet, ten inches in length. It has channel letters. It's internally illuminated, uh, white letters with a green skin. Uh, the existing Whole Foods building sign at the westerly entrance, or excuse me, at the easterly entrance, measures seventy-five square feet. That was previously approved and installed, um, so it's at the site now. And then, of course, there's the temporary sign at the westerly entrance. And two tenant ID signs, which are pylon signs, were also previously installed, one at Waterview Boulevard and the one, uh, along Route forty-six. So, let's talk first about the project benefits. Uh, firstly, this project will enhance public safety by providing clear identification for this center's anchor tenant. And the combination of the topography and the large building setbacks really reduce visibility of the Whole Foods market from Route forty-six. Much of the building is obscured by a massive retaining wall along Route forty-six. As a matter of fact, the Whole Foods building is only visible for a very short segment of highway along forty-six, immediately near its intersection with Waterview Boulevard.
Not to cut you off, Mr. Karlebach, but, uh, do we have a photo that could show that viewpoint?
I have a board that we could mark into evidence. It's a series of four photographs, and if you, uh, the bottom two photographs show the view of, uh, Waterview Plaza from Route forty-six. The one in the bottom left shows that very massive retaining wall, and, uh, the photograph in the bottom right is near the, uh, intersection, the traffic light, where you start to gain a view of the building. So, I know, this is difficult to see, I can pass the ground.
If you could have the, uh, Mr. Burdick at A one.
A one, on market.
With his initials and today's handles.
Mr. Karlebach, are you familiar with the ShopRite that's, um, farther down, east of, on, east of...
Uh, I haven't been there in quite some time.
Well, as you, as you drive by, do you see the size of the letters?
Yes.
And I think it's like a quarter of a mile from the office.
Yeah.
Are we dealing with something that's not even as, as ostentatious as...
Only half, that's right.
Yeah, I mean, it's only half, and we approved that ShopRite size.
Right, you know, it's, it's not uncommon for a CVS or a Walgreens to have signage that totals seven hundred square feet. Okay? Uh, this is, of course, much, much less than this. This is two hundred and twenty-six square feet, this sign, where a hundred and fifty square feet is permitted. The difference is, in this zone, the front yard setback requirement is fifty feet. This building happens to be about five hundred feet from the right-of-way line, not fifty feet. So, I'm, I'm asking the board members to compare the effects of a hundred and fifty square foot sign, fifty feet from the right-of-way, that will be permitted versus a sign two hundred and twenty-six square feet, five hundred feet. And then, the other problem you have is, once you enter the site, once you get, uh, at the intersection of, uh, Waterview Boulevard and the access driveway, you're still looking at a retaining wall. You don't see the Whole Foods until you fully enter the site. So, therein lies the problem. And, um, so there's the, the two variances. The other one, of course, is to have the, um, the height of the sign thirty-one feet, uh, one inch above grade, where twenty-five feet is permitted, a max of twenty-five feet is permitted. And there's two reasons for that. Number one is, you want to get that, the height of the sign is, is high up as you can so you can see it from the roadway. And the second reason is, there's windows at the twenty-five foot building elevation, and you don't want to put the sign across the windows, of course. So, that's the justification for the other, um, variance. So, this is a very special situation that warrants a relaxation of the standards. The goal is to move traffic to the site safely and through the site safely. Um, the second building sign, of course, is necessary to announce two entrances. The Whole Foods actually has two separate entrances. It's a massive building. It's two hundred and sixty-five linear feet, uh, across the building space. So, a smaller sign would just not be effective at this location. The signage integrates well with the building and its surroundings. It provides attractive, modern signage befitting the Whole Foods market image. And for those reasons, this application advances two important purposes of the municipal land use law. One is to encourage location and design of transportation routes, which promote the free flow of traffic. Another one is to promote a desirable visual environment through good civic designs and arrangements. So, this just talked briefly about both prongs of the negative criteria. Uh, firstly, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the public good. Uh, visually, there's no detriment. The signage is appropriate to the scale of the building. It's modern, attractive signage, the typical iconic Whole Foods market sign. It doesn't cause any visual clutter or any other disturbance. The applicant has successfully integrated the signage with the architectural features of the building, and this proposal creates no ill effects on the neighborhood, which is commercial in neighbor, uh, excuse me, commercial in nature. Uh, the number of wall signs is befitting the scale of development, and these wall signs are important wayfinders, uh, which facilitate the safe movement of traffic. I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Uh, the relief sought relates to a specific piece of property and does not cause damage to the zone plan. Uh, the planning goal of avoiding visual clutter is achieved by appropriately distributing the signage within this building's very lengthy, uh, wall face. And the deviation of seventy-six square feet is not substantial, given the scale of the building and the scale of the overall development. So, uh, in conclusion, I'll say that the benefits exceed the detriments. The public benefits are numerous, uh, providing safe, attractive signage at an appropriate scale, safely moving traffic through the site, and promoting a desirable visual environment. And since this proposed signage has very limited visibility from off-site locations, there are no identifiable detriments. Therefore, the public benefits in this case prevail. I reviewed the two thousand and nineteen master plan. It does make recommendations regarding signage, although I don't think any of those recommendations are applicable, uh, to this site. So, I think the board should feel very comfortable in granting the, uh, the two C variances.
Thank you, Mr. Karlebach.
Just for my, the, the DSW and the Alto signs?
Yes.
How large are they in relationship to your proposed signs?
How wide are they?
How, how big, how high, wide?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry.
The current, the current Whole Foods sign?
Yes.
Is it going to stay?
That's going to stay, that's seventy-five square feet.
Yeah, okay, that's seventy-five square.
Correct.
So, the big one's going to go down here?
Correct.
It's going to go to the top of that building?
Correct.
So, it's going to cover that whole space up there?
Um, it's going to cover a good portion of it. It's fifty-eight feet wide, fifty-eight feet, uh, and I, I think there's actually an elevation that might even show you the extent of the, the wall signage on the, on the building face.
Okay, and then the coming soon sign will be gone.
That's going to be gone.
And that's the other sign that's going there.
And there's also another sign that looks like it's a permanent sign. It's actually temporary. It's below the windows. It, on the photograph in the upper left, there's a sign that's below...
Over here?
Those windows, right there. It's right where the top of that bus is.
That's going to be gone?
That's going to be gone as well.
So, all the new signage you're proposing is up top?
That's right.
I, I would put, um, there's, uh, plans that were submitted, sheet two out of six for the plans show where the sign is being proposed and chosen in scale with the building on that side of the wall.
I got that, okay.
Sign A is the sign that's being proposed.
I got it.
Just one question. There is no message board on this, any of these signs, correct?
Message, no. One, uh, they both say Whole Foods Market.
Nothing, or something like that?
Nothing.
Okay.
What about the signs, going to be lit?
Yes.
Internally, or...
They're, they're internally lit, yes. They're the channel letters. Um, this one is going to have a white face with a green skin on it. Um, typical of Whole Foods Market signs.
Are they turned off when the store closes?
Um, either that or when the mall closes, I'm not sure.
Correct, we have a representative from Whole Foods who can speak to the hours of the sign.
Any other questions, this witness? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given? Please come forward.
Will you be testifying or simply asking questions? Because this period is only for questions.
I'm going to ask a question.
Okay, very good. If you could state your name and spell it for the record, please, and your address.
Nicholas Homyak, H-O-M-Y-A-K, twenty-six Oneida Avenue, Lake Hiawatha.
Thank you, Mr. Homyak.
The height of the sign is, I heard thirty-one feet, then I heard fifty-eight feet wide. And I'm interested in the contour that the building sits on, what's left of it anyway. And will the sign extend past the, the tree, the open space, and be visible to the immediate neighborhood?
Well, the, it's not going to extend beyond the face of the building, if that's the question, I'm not sure. And, uh, we do have an exhibit that shows you the extent of the, the wall signage. Uh, the attorney could show it to you. Um, the, I think the nearest, um, the nearest neighbors are both office buildings, and the nearest one, I think, is four hundred feet away.
No, I'm, I'm confused, and this is why I'm confused. They want the sign so people could see it from Route forty-six? So, it's elevated, above, in, into the sky?
No, it's on the building.
No, it's on the building. It's on the facade of the building. It's not going to be any higher than the building.
Well, yeah, I didn't understand.
Here's a photo of the plans. I'm showing him the plan that were submitted to the board, sheet two of six. This, this Whole Foods exists, the sign's being proposed right there.
And behind that is the open space.
No, this building exists, the sign's being proposed on the wall. There's no built-up on top of the building. The size of the building's not being increased or altered at all.
I, I think I understand what he's saying.
Yeah, I, I was confused.
Okay, so, so this mall, the, the, right, so this mall was actually subdivided out of a much larger parcel. The, the shopping mall sits on sixteen acres. There's an additional ten point, uh, something acres of, uh, ten point six-three acres in an undeveloped forested state that was part of the subdivision. Uh, but this sign is not going to face that open space that you're speaking of.
They're never going to see.
No.
Yeah.
All right, and so the purpose of the light, then, is who sees the light? If you're already up in the mall and you're going to Whole Foods, then I don't understand the purpose of the light.
Well, the, the, the Whole Foods is open while it gets, while it's dark out. I mean, in, in the winter time, it gets dark at like four-thirty in the afternoon. The Whole Foods is still open, so you have to be able to see the entrance to the building.
There's not enough residual light?
No, no, there is, no.
All right. Okay, thank you. Any, anybody else have any questions, this witness? Do you want to bring your next, call your next witness up?
Sure. I'm calling up a representative of Whole Foods just to discuss the, the hours that the sign will be lit.
Sir, if you could please stay standing, raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you're about to give before this board shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God.
I do.
If you could please spell, uh, your name?
Brett Hardman, H-A-R-D-M-A-N.
Brett, uh, one T or two Ts?
One Ts.
And, Mr. Hardman, you are?
Uh, Representative, I work for Whole Foods Store Development Team.
Counsel?
Uh, Brett, could you just speak to the hours that the sign will be illuminated?
Uh, sure, um, all of our exterior signage is on an energy management system, but, um, it'll come on at about six o'clock, um, maybe five o'clock daylight savings time. It will be off by ten-thirty. Store closes at ten, it'll be off by ten-thirty.
Those are my own questions.
Why, why would it stay on that extra half hour if you're closed at ten?
I mean, it can go off at ten, we have...
It should, because then what you're doing is for the very purposes of your previous expert, you know, arguing that it queues traffic. If you're closed, why do you want to queue any more traffic up there?
Understood, and we can certainly, um, make it go off at ten o'clock. It's not an issue. Um, sometimes, you know, we say we close at ten, there's some residual customers still checking out and things like that, but I, I understand what you're saying about maybe attracting people to keep coming. Um, but we can certainly make it go off at ten o'clock.
And so, um, in regards to like you citing Whole Foods there to begin with, I mean, didn't you forecast that this issue was going to be an issue?
Um...
Back then?
Well, usually, we'll enter into a real estate deal, and, and in all honesty, signage comes later. Um, so, they probably didn't think about the signage, given the elevation of where the store is in the center.
Really? I really, honestly, I don't know, you know, because you're asking, you know, this is, this is an issue that I have for, with a lot of businesses, where they, they make a bad decision on where to site a store, um, relative to the visibility of signage and everything, and then they come and they, you know, they ask us to bend our ordinances like a pretzel to accommodate, you know, to accommodate a, a big, bigger, bigger, bigger sign, because they didn't...
I appreciate that.
They didn't think about this when they were, um, building.
I, I appreciate, appreciate the question, but Mr. Hardman wasn't necessarily involved with the two thousand and sixteen, uh, planning board approval and the applications for this. He's just here as a representative to discuss the hours simply for the sign.
Okay, oh, all right. He had Whole Foods next to his name, so I was...
I, I understand, it's just Whole Foods is a large company. He just wasn't part of that particular application, so I don't know if he has the facts to speak on that exact determination. But if you did look at the previous planning board approval, I believe that planning board approval went through court. It, it was very reviewed. Uh, the siding of the building, I think, was there to accommodate the large parking lot in the front. Um, this is why the setback is large. But just for the record, this applicant can't, or this witness...
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given? I hear none, see none. Any other witnesses?
No other witnesses.
Um, you want to...
Sure.
Hold, hold your summons till we hear what, uh, are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application?
Nicholas Homyak, Lake Hiawatha, uh-
Sir, now, now that you're going to be testifying against it, you need to swear an oath, if you could please stand up and raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you're about to give before this board shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, it's like Mr. Schneider said, this whole project was a nightmare to the town. I find it hard to believe when they say it's a public benefit. It's already destroyed the character of that immediate neighborhood, removed the last of the hills of Troy. Whole Foods could've occupied an already built structure. The sign is just saying like, we did all of this, we transformed the earth, and, uh, against the precipities, no, no rezone vote, we still, I mean, we still don't know how that happened, and it's still not enough, and with all the other methods and means of knowing that Whole Foods is there, media, other signs, it's just, and you, and, and you can't see it from the road, there's how many other signs did he say? Three or four already around the circumference of that, the last of the hills of Troy, and then you have to wait to get up, you don't know where you're going by the time you get up there, oh, Whole Foods! So it's, I, I think the, the sign, and especially the illumination, is totally unnecessary, and I find it hard to believe there isn't residual light up there from the other structures or the surrounding, I find that very hard to believe. I think, uh, this town is bent over backwards and jumped through the fiery hoop and actually, uh, betrayed itself in allowing that development to begin with, and I think that this, there's no reason, but they couldn't foresee this, but everything else they did, I don't think that should be approved by the zoning board.
Any questions of this witness?
No.
Guess not. Any members of, any other members of the public?
Dave Kaplan, two sixty-three, Intervale.
Mr. Kaplan, if you could please stand up, raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you're about to give before this board shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes. Apologize, I should've known better. Um, I, I don't have any major concerns with this, um, but as someone who does live next to Whole Foods, I would hope that we would continue to work to reduce the tremendous amount of lighting that it, that the entire lot, not just Whole Foods, is, is now producing. Anything that the board could do to help would be appreciated, so the recommendation or the suggestion, um, to shut off that light, the, the lighted sign, at the hour that the store closes would be appreciated. Thank you.
Any questions of this witness? Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. Any other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition, in support of? I hear none, seen none. You wanna sum, or you just wanna go on the testimony given?
Uh, I'd just like to say two responses. Uh, I think the planner has given, uh, plenty of, uh, benefits for granting the sign. Um, the condition that the sign be turned off at the closing of a store has been agreed to and would be agreed to if that was conditioned upon the approval tonight. Um, and again, uh, we've, we feel that this sign really does truly present only planning benefits by properly identifying the store, um, reducing any kind of traffic, uh, problems that are associated with not properly finding, uh, the Whole Foods store from Route forty-six, and also orderly transports, um, drivers within the Whole Foods Shopping Center parking lot to the proper entrance of the store. Uh, we feel there's numerous planning benefits for it, and would respectfully request that this board, uh, approve the two variances requested.
Thank you. Do we need to go into conference?
We can go into conference.
We should. Motion to go into conference?
So moved.
They're second?
Second, Snyder.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Who wants to start?
I'll start, um, so, yeah, I mean, based on what I said before, I'll be voting no for the reasons that I given in regards to, you know, bending our signage ordinances to, to suit applicants when they, you know, wanna build first and figure it out later. Um, in regard, in regards to the queuing of the traffic, I don't see this signage variance helping out with what's already happening at Whole Foods, whereby ADP, it, the, the confused traffic, it's not gonna clear up the confused traffic that rides the gore and the, and the breakdown lane or whatever it is, um, until they figure out how to, you know, ramp up to, to Whole Foods. So for those reasons, I'm gonna be voting no.
Thank you.
Yeah, this, this application is for, basically for the sign, a couple of C variances that they are looking for, and I think it's justified, uh, I, I'm just looking at a different point of view, is that, uh, the setback of this building, this structure from Route forty-six, uh, is one of the reasons I, I look for a bigger sign, and though people can see it from Route forty-six. The scale of the building is a huge building, you need a sign, there are two entrances, uh, quite far away, um, and also the retaining wall that, uh, kind of restricts you, uh, your side distance. So, for that reason, and of course, uh, the ti, hours of operation for the illumination, I'll be voting yes for that.
You said yes?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Berkowitz?
Um, I'm gonna be voting in favor.
Thank you.
Me too, I'm in favor of this application, uh, especially adapting to the lighting shutout by ten, ten PM, and also it is a benefit for the customers, also for the signage and all this stuff, and the illumination effects also very low compared to the, compared neighbors, so.
Mr. Prisant?
I will, I will vote in favor, considering the setback, um, the hours of, uh, operation, also, um, minimal, or minimal effect for drivers passing on Route forty-six, so I, I will support this application.
Mr. Willens?
I'll support.
Thank you. I, I'm, I'm just going to compare this to the ShopRite sign that we did a number of years ago, a similar distance from the highway, uh, and those, those ShopRite letters have gotta be what, twice the size, three times the size? So, uh, and there's no resonance to the front of the building that's gonna be adversely affected. Motion, motion to go into conference?
So moved, Snyder.
They're second?
Second, ready.
All in favor? No one opposed? Okay, it was a pretty weak eye. Um, someone like to frame a resolution so we can move on?
Um, I'll frame a resolution. Um, Chairman, I move that we grant the, uh, C variances to store wall sign, an application nineteen, call it five, for Whole Foods located at Boulevard, Block four-two-one, uh, twenty-nine oh-three, Zone RC, with the condition that the sign might be turned off, disclosing the store.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
I, I have a quick question. Do we wanna fix the time that the sign is gonna turn off as opposed to leaving it sort of ambiguous?
I don't know, there's no ambiguity. It's ten o'clock.
Was their testimony offered that it was gonna shut off at ten o'clock?
Yes.
Correct, the testimony was, okay, why don't we fix it at ten o'clock for purposes of the motion?
Who was gonna frame a resolution?
He did.
He did, I'm sorry.
And he stayed at ten o'clock.
I was just clarifying the, when the business closes.
Do they need a second on that resolution?
Second, ready.
A second, any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Perik?
Yes.
Mr. Prasad?
Yes.
Mr. Ready?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Mr. Willens?
Yes.
Chairman Arrington?
Yes. Results of variances granted, we'll memorialize this at, uh, the March eighteenth meeting. Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, enjoy.
Yeah, he can see all the disparaging comments.
Okay, application nineteen sixty-seven, Francisco Mateo, twenty-one Farron Drive, C variance to construct a shed, legalize a distinct pool, pool equipment and patio. Is he here? Mr. Mateo here?
What number does he call?
Nineteen fif, nineteen sixty-seven. Francisco Mateo, not present?
Okay.
Nora, you know anything?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, application nineteen fifty-two, Randy Grieco, twenty-two Lincoln Avenue, C variance to legalize a five-hundred-and-forty-six square foot new driveway and a two-foot-by-two-inch retaining wall. Good evening, how are you? Mr. Swerman?
Chairman, if I may, uh, application nineteen sixty-seven, is that being dismissed? Or should be rescheduled? We're here in opposition.
Um, ah, well, by ten o'clock, we'll make a decision, 'cause he's got till ten o'clock to show up. Uh, you know, sometimes there, there's a, there's a misunderstanding on time and date and place, and it doesn't happen too often, can you shed any light on this, uh, Nora?
I have no idea.
Have no idea, okay. Application nineteen fifty-two, we're gonna go ahead with this one.
Sir, if you could please raise your right hand, you swear that the testimony you're about to give before this board shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
If you could please state and spell your name?
Randy Grieco, uh, R-A-N-D-Y, Grieco, G-R-I-E-C-O.
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 Mr. Grieco, your address, please.
Twenty-two Lincoln Avenue, Lake Hiawatha.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So you are proposing, and you need a variance for plan and design standards, where five feet is allowed, you're proposing three feet drop. Three feet. He doesn't need a variance for the wall? What does that mean?
Yeah, I don't know.
The wall with the drive-in?
Does he need a variance for the wall, Mr.?
Must be.
Just 'cause of where it is? Why not, and, and this driveway is already there?
It was an existing driveway, yes, and I moved it over a little bit, a couple feet.
So you, you did this construction?
Yes.
This has been done since you on that property?
Yes.
And, um, is this to enable you to get cars off the streets?
Yeah, that, exactly, and, and when it snows out, I can't park on the street, and they come knock on my door, the police come, and they flash the light through there, and, um, I've had, um, people scratch the car on the street, so I'm just trying for the safety to keep all the cars in the driveway.
And you were not aware of the five-foot setback?
I wasn't, I live in a-
And you did the wall also at the same time?
I started doing the wall, yeah, I stopped when they came by and told me to, so I didn't finish it, but, yes. There was already existing rocks there, I pulled the rocks up, there was big, good boulders, um, so I started putting some block down.
Why do you need the wall like that?
Well, my property, um, is, was oversloped, it, so I thought, yeah, the rock came, it came over the rocks.
Have you seen the engineer's report?
Me?
Yes.
I have not.
Well, he, he did one in January fifteenth.
I did not receive it.
Commenting about various things, but you've gotta take a plan over to him and-
Okay.
And show him the amount of fill that you have put in and will put in.
Okay.
It's the dri, the driveway hasn't been built.
It, I didn't, I stopped when they came by and told me to stop, I completely stopped, I reached out and they told me to come here.
So you would be agreeable to go over the engineer's?
Of course, yes.
How wide your driveway gonna be when you get done?
Um, I'm not sure the exact, I think they put it on there, I moved it, I think, uh, three feet, well, I did it more on my side a little bit, and then I spoke to-
With the two cars?
Yes, with the two cars, yes.
Now you can't get two cars in?
What?
You can't get two cars into your driveway now?
Now I can, the way it is, I mean, I didn't, I didn't pave it yet, but yes, now I can fit four cars.
Before you did the, before you did any work?
I could not, no, absolutely not. I spoke to my neighbors, and we made sure-
No problem?
No, absolutely, they were actually, they did the same thing.
Any questions over here on the left? No. Any questions on the right?
No.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening?
So, I, I guess I have a question, I'm sorry, um, and it may not be, probably not for you, it's for, I just, the attorney, engineer. There's a lot here on the engineer's report that needs to happen, how do we compel, so, you know, I'm not opposed, there's a need here.
I understand.
How do we ensure that the engineer's requirements are met before we actually vote on this? It just seems like there's a lot here to vote on, to know that it's, it, I just need to know that if we're going, going to approve something like this, this is gonna happen, 'cause there are some concerns here, and we don't know what the, you know, bullet number two, there's an increase in stormwater runoff, where's that going, how much?
The, the, the answer to where this ends up, this does not require a building permit. This is all through the township and the driveway opening permit, so what I would suggest you do is that until Nora gets a letter saying he has approved driveway opening permit, that if he tries to do the work, it'll be a violation and send Jennifer out with her summons book.
No.
You didn't say he saw the engineer's report?
No, he didn't.
I have not, I have not.
It comes down to showing the engineer a plan for what this little retaining wall's gonna be, and how he's gonna fill it. So if you use that, I think you're gonna have to do that anyway, but the, the only, I think what it comes down to is you say, okay, we'll leave it in the engineer's hands, 'cause ultimately that's where it's gonna be, or we wanna see him say okay, and hold him up until, uh, he's got the plans together and over to the engineer's office.
So we can, it's almost like a, a conditional yes vote, we would vote yes pending the engineer's approval, ultimately, right?
And the compliance of the engineer's requirements.
Yes. Yeah.
Which, which we kinda did with the, the, this, the application earlier this evening. She's got, she's gotta check with the engineer, we'll now be embedded in the, um-
Resolution.
Resolution. Any other questions of this witness?
And you're okay with that, right?
No. Yeah, I said, yeah.
Did I ask?
To make sure everything's okay.
There's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
One, one more question, sorry, number five, it says no fill should be placed within five feet of the property line, which we know we're already, he's within three feet. Too late, or we're just gonna erase number five?
No, that, yeah, you can make it-
We're overriding number five.
Without that, because it, you can't get his driveway wide to get the two cars unless he gets the five feet.
Understood, yeah, yeah, okay. I, I just don't want confusion when we say subject to his approval, and then he, we might have an issue with number five, and then we're back here.
Good point, the, the variance, the proposal is to grant the three-foot variance, so that would override that point, I guess, right?
That would think.
Yeah, okay. Good. Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, supportive of this application? I hear none. Sure, come on.
Hi, just to understand the application, I am-
Please state your name and address.
Sure, Nakul Kasadwala, one oh-two Minehaha Boulevard, I'm just, uh, at the corner of this property, I received a letter also for this variance, I think, last year, this is the second hearing or first hearing? No, it's the first. I received a letter for this also, for this hearing, I have this question about the right side setback here, so the setback will be like, uh, or it is going in the right side setback by three feet, just want to understand that, I have that question only,
To the increase of the driveway.
He's asking for a three-foot setback on, on the wall.
Okay, that was the only question.
That's no good?
No, that was the question, just for understanding. Because I'm seeing the construction going on maybe since last year?
No, it was this year, they told me to stop, so I went through the whole process.
Just want to understand that, on the right side, what is the setback is happening?
Three feet, three feet.
Three feet, thanks, that's the question.
Okay. Do we need to go into conference? Someone like to make a recommendation?
Yeah, this is the minimum requir, request, uh, to accommodate the needs of the family. I'm in favor of this application.
I wouldn't say it's minimal, but, you know, it certainly allows him to enjoy the property and accommodates a family member who has ADA issues.
Someone like to frame a resolution?
I'll do it. I propose that, uh, we approve the recommended approval of application nineteen fifty-two, lot six oh five, lot twenty-one, zone R four, twenty-two Lincoln Avenue, uh, to have, contrary to section four thirty dash two seventy-five, uh, as written and in compliance with the engineer's, uh, adherence, or adherence to the engineer's request of fixes.
Second, ready?
Any discussion, Nora Calderon?
Mr. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Capson?
Yes.
Mr. Puri?
Yes.
Mr. Passad?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Willings?
Yes.
Chairman Arrington?
Yes. Results of the variances granted will memorialize this and on March fourth, March eighteenth, and you'll be free to proceed.
I just need to reach out to the engineer, town engineer, go over with him?
You better get ahold of him and...
Okay.
You have the document that was given?
Yeah, I'm gonna go over this and I'll, I'll make sure I reach out to him, go on, and just reach out to him, I appreciate it.
Okay, application nineteen forty-three, one eighty-one Kingston Realty. This is a D variance for a adult daycare.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Stephen Tom Belakian, Wiener Law Group, on behalf of the applicant. Chairman, members of the board. If you recall, we began the hearing on this application on December fourth, twenty nineteen. And we continued it to this evening to allow, uh, some additional work to be done on, on some site plan issues that were raised by the boards, some concerns raised by the board, and also to allow us to bring with us a professional planner to provide the board with the planning rationales and justifications for the use variance that's being sought this evening. Why don't I sit down? So tonight, we're gonna have Mr. Adnan Khan, our professional engineer, resume his testimony. He began on December fourth, he was previously sworn in qualified. And then after Mr. Khan, we're gonna have John McDonough, our professional planner, uh, provide his planning testimony. And, uh, Chairman, I just wanted, as an aside, to say that you brought back a lot of memories for me, because that sign, I got that shop by the sign approved.
Did you?
It was twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago?
Twenty years ago.
Wow.
And...
Where has my life gone?
So twenty, so, I, it was before this board, obviously, a lot of the faces have changed. And one of the board members...
I think you're only looking at the only face that was here twenty years ago. Me and John.
Was, was Harris Podby on the board back then? Harris Podby? Does that name ring a bell?
I wouldn't even know.
No. So anyway, so one of the board members asked, Mr. Tom Belakian, do you really need a sign that big? Because remember, it's a thousand-foot setback from Route forty-six to the ShopRite.
Was Joe Rapp on the board at that time?
Excuse me?
Joe Rapp, you remember Joe?
I don't remember.
El Willing Man?
I don't...
Yeah, he was, John shaking his head.
So, so what happened was, he was like, so the sign, the sign...
In, in, with all due respect to Joe Rapp, who was a fantastic person, he's a wonderful, wonderful individual. He had two four-letter words, sign and shed. We would, we would debate a sign and a shed for hours, for hours, yes.
This, my sign wasn't one of them. I mean, it, but, but what was, what was really interesting is that, maybe a year after the sign went up, I'm driving on that service road on Route eighty, and back then, there wasn't as much development on Route forty-six. You could see the Arlington Plaza Shopping Center.
From eighty?
From eighty. So I turned to my right, and I see the ShopRite sign. I swear to God, you can see it from the moon. I was like, man, that's too, that's big, that's a big sign. So, but thanks for bringing back those memories. Um, okay, well, without further ado, again, Mr. Khan is here to resume his testimony.
Mr. Tom Belakian, if I could just get the spelling of your, of his name, please.
Yes, uh, Adnan, A-D-N-A-N, last name Khan, K-H-A-N.
And he was your engineer, correct?
He's our engineer, and, you know, Mr. McDonough will, he, yeah. Mr. Khan testified on this...
Understood, I just wanna get this one.
Thank you. Adnan, um, again, you were here on December fourth, you heard the comments and, um, issues raised by the board. Uh, you have a, uh, some renderings up on the board there, which you'll introduce, uh, but why don't you give the board a flavor of the, what, what, remind them about what the issues were, what you've done?
Uh, actually, we haven't revised the engineering plans yet, but since I think like the last time we were here, we completed our engineering testimony, and I believe the issue came up for the planner. Uh, so we are here for that testimony, but I can recap what, uh, the applicant is proposing.
Has that already been marked, Mr. Tom Belakian?
Not that one.
Not this one, but, uh, our site plans are. Once I get to that, we'll mark it.
So the site plan is already exhibit?
That's in the, uh, I'm not sure we have to mark it, because it's part of the package.
It is part of, it is a part of the package, no new revisions were submitted to the term.
But Adnan, when you do get to the rendering, we'll, we'll mark that as in the...
That's right.
Do you have the, the next number in the sequence?
I was hoping you had.
So if you recall, like, uh, what the applicant is proposing is like they're using, going to use the existing structure, uh, which currently is a small warehouse and grocery store, and convert it into an adult daycare center. Uh, the parking is proposed in the existing parking lot. We are going to restripe the area to make the parking spaces compliant parking spaces. Currently, there are lines, but they are not according to the standards. Uh, the applicant was also proposing two doors for accessibility in and out of the building. Uh, they are all ADA accessible, and a sidewalk along the front of the building with a nine-foot high and eight-feet-wide canopy, uh, from end to end of the building. Uh, with our lighting improvements proposed on the property. So that was pretty much in nutshell, uh, and, and, uh, sorry, and a lot of screening and landscaping along the front, along the Kingston Road. Uh, so we went through the engineering testimony in detail. We received some comments from the board last time. Uh, we didn't, uh, incorporated those comments yet, but we were waiting for the final, like, testimony by the planner and get all the comments, and then we'll, if this project gets approved, we will submit the, uh, plans to comply with all the conditions and, uh, comments. Uh, what I want to introduce is an architectural rendering, which I believe was not part of our, uh, presentation last time. And, uh, again, the architect cannot be here today, so I just want to go through quickly. Uh, I believe...
Why don't we mark that as A one, but with today's date?
This was submitted, right?
The rendering?
Uh, the, not the color, Greg, I think the black and white elevations were submitted.
And, uh, the board, uh, I'm handing out placemat-sized copies so the board can have a copy.
Could you just initial that as well and put today's date on it?
A one or say today's date?
You put today's date?
Yes, of course.
Very good, yeah.
Well, actually, I'll check back when I get into the office with the next sequences, and, uh, we'll reference it as that sequence.
Thank you very much.
So no need for it to be A one.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
So, uh, what this, uh, exhibit or rendering depicts is just the color elevations of the elevations that you have received as part of the architectural submission, how the building will look like, uh, from Kingston Road. The east elevation is the front elevation, uh, if you're looking from the Kingston Road. And the west elevation is, of course, the rear side towards the school. And then we have the north elevation that is, uh, uh, where the warehouse structure and existing ra, existing, uh, concrete race platform is. And the south elevation is the elevation from the parking lot. So it's essentially the same, uh, document or same drawing that was submitted as part, but it's colored. So this is something that I want to introduce. And I believe if you have any questions regarding engineering testimony that you provided, or I will be glad to answer.
Mr. Khan will be available throughout the evening, uh, even after Mr. McDonough testifies, so if any engineering issues, concerns, or he'll be here to answer any of them.
Anybody have any questions, this witness?
Just a quick question. This canopy was planned on the east to throw out the building, right? Uh, oh, the east side throw out the building, that's right.
Any other questions? Any members of the public have any question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, John. You talked about the canopy running the full front of the building, but the architectural plan doesn't show that.
I, I realize that, like, I'm looking at it right now.
I wanna go further with that, that's, you know, that's something that's detailed. The, the doorway, the northern doorway, as I understand it, is for employees and, and materials to come into the building.
Actually...
That's not where the clients would go.
Uh, both doorways are handicap accessible, wheelchair accessible.
That's not what I asked you. What I asked you was, what's the purpose of the doorway on the north end of the building?
It's the same, like, for accessibility of the patrons coming in too, as well...
Clients will go there?
Yes.
How are they gonna get there?
There's a ramp, we are showing a ramp, like, in the...
How are they gonna get out of that little bus and get into that doorway?
Uh, we are, again, as I testified last time, we have pickup and drop-off in the parking area. Uh... The, the vans will be parked here in the, in the pickup, and then they will be walking, or, I mean, wheelchair or walking. And that's why we are providing a sidewalk throughout the front edge of the property.
Mr. Oh, uh, even though I'm...
This is not what your client described last time.
He's referring to the second door that's over here.
Right, yeah.
So what is the purpose of that door?
My understanding is both doors have to be client accessible.
That, I'm not, I, I, I just, don't dispute that, but it just is the, my notes, Rex, you can call that the main entrance for the clients is on the southern door. They come in, pull up, get out of the bus, hop into the building.
I think I...
The other end was for employees and for, uh, deliveries.
If I recall, I think originally, when I testified last time, we were going for both the doors as handicap accessible for the clients. But during the meeting, hearing, the discussion came in as to why we need both the doors accessible, why don't we just keep the one door, which is close to the parking lot? And I think that was the discussion that had, uh, we had, and the client agreed that if need to, like, they can just remove the accessibility of the clients from this door and use it for deliveries and supplies. I think that was the, during the discussion, that transpired.
Well, that would kinda go to, then, what would be the point of spending the money to run a sidewalk all along the front of the building?
And again, that was the discussion also, like, uh, and if you need to curtail down, we, we, and I think we agreed, or the client agreed, that we'll make those necessary changes.
So you, you, would you agree to take the sidewalk off the front of the building?
Right, not entirely, not entirely.
Obviously, off to the doors?
Yes, yeah.
And the canopies would be as per the rendering?
Uh, we can shorten the canopy, yes.
Okay. And then, get to that, then the space between the front of the building and the road is now lawn? That was the original...
That, that was the, yes.
Yeah, parking in there and whatever, and we agreed that was the good idea.
Going to be more green space, that's correct, yes.
You've got a bunch of arbor parties lined up along the road. Are you open to changing that landscaping plan now that we've, we've got some more green area as opposed to just arbor parties right across the front of the building?
Yeah, this is just like, of course, like, we will work with the township, like, the forestry department to see like what their preferences are, even with the board, board engineer and planner, uh, which is used, like, uh, this is just to show, like, okay, the client is going to provide some screening. And, uh, yeah, we can enhance more landscaping along the front edge.
I mean, for a building, the condition is now, and look at these renderings, it really, uh, is recaptured. Uh, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me to stick arbor bodies along the front of it after you approve the bill.
I'm not sure, I mean, it's, uh, it's, it's an ugly building now, and no disrespect to the owner who's here. But, yeah, it's gonna be a prettier building, and, uh, there's no point in hiding it, I mean...
Yeah, I can see doing...
If the board wants a, a less intense screen, or...
In the middle of someplace and something lower and...
We, we can make a combination of some, like, uh, evergreens and shrubbery and create a little prettier space along the front, more aesthetically pleasing.
And, you know, if you wanted to extend the sidewalk or widen it out, so then you could put benches outside for people to walk around, yeah? I just don't think you wanna encourage them to walk in that little space along Kingston when you've got some areas in the back that would be probably less noisy.
And safer.
And safer. And safer. Thank you. Okay, so we, we adjusted that, right?
Yes.
Okay, no problem.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Any other questions of this witness?
I just, didn't we have an issue with the door where all the clients were gonna come in from the bus?
I think, I think they've solved it with their ramps, and they've increased the bu, bus, uh, loading areas.
Where they were gonna have, like, a, a certain volume of people coming at once? And it, the, the door was very narrow to accommodate that mass entryway?
I think the, the way we, um, because the, the client controls, the vans controls the movement of, of the clientele, it won't be a situation where there'll be a hundred people trying to cram through the door at once.
No, but they're gonna be like sixteen at a time? Twelve to sixteen at a time?
This door is six feet wide too, like, it's a same-sized door as this one, so it is designed for handicap accessibility, uh, and we will comply with the court.
You could, and I think with the, the example we used in whipping you now, the existing location, there's a much smaller door. It, it's not an issue, so, again, the vans don't come all at once, and if they do, the vans would stage to allow one group to get in, then the next group, without all, a free-for-all, all at once.
Right.
These are, you know, older clientele that, it has to be made...
Yeah, we also, did it, we agree on an altered traffic pattern going into, onto the site with the buses instead of going around.
That's correct.
They're going directly into the front?
Yeah, like, so that if they need to, they can queue on-site. Yes, yes, we did that too, yes, yeah.
No other questions?
Any other questions by the board? Any members in the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given? I hear none, see none.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Khan will be available for the remainder of the evening. I'd like to bring up my next witness, Mr. McDonough. Although, Mr. McDonough, he needs no introduction?
No.
Mr. John McDonough.
You swear that the testimony you're about to give before this board should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
All your licenses are there?
Yes.
You've appeared before this board, right?
Too many times. I have.
Once, yeah. So, John, um, you know, this applicant, it's an adult daycare center, it's a use that's not permitted in this zone, requiring use variance? Uh, can you please provide the board with your thoughts on planning rationales, uh, to justify, hopefully, an approval from this board?
Sure, uh, Mr. Khan has given you really a vetting of the negative criteria, and that's what this application is really about. This is an inherently beneficial use, whenever we're dealing with an inherently beneficial use, positive criteria presumptively satisfied. We'll walk you through the four parts of, of the applicable test, but it's really about the negative criteria and whether the applicant has a handle on the management of the facility and the site can accommodate what's before you. I'll give you the usual packet of photo exhibits and maps just to show and establish a foundation of the planning conclusions, and then we'll walk you through the four parts of the appropriate tests.
John, when did the, somebody say that this is inherently beneficial use?
Well, it's actually...
Being a court, I mean, you and I...
Courts have, it's in resolutions that I've done here on other, on other sites.
So, so we've determined?
It's a, it's a town determination.
We've stated it. Have you represented any of the other adult take cares?
Two or three of them.
Two or three.
Yeah, there's one over on forty-six, there's one over on, uh, by where the old Coca-Cola facility used to be.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I remember that, yes.
Oh, yeah, I remember that, yes.
And there's one more.
Jefferson.
Jefferson?
On Jefferson? Oh, that one's never done.
There's no, no, there's no Jefferson one.
It's going on Jefferson.
Tom Balakian will mark this A. Next sequence after the previous sequence.
So just to remind the board of the aspect of the site itself, A...
Well, this is going to be, we're going to add it because we didn't bring the notes from the last hearing, but this is the next, the continuing series.
Okay, or A1 with today's date.
A resolution, it will be identified.
But it's the second exhibit we're choosing tonight.
It's going to be a six-part exhibit file size 11 by 17, series of maps and photographs on the first page. We simply show on a tax parcel map the subject property, which is oversized. It's the biggest property in the area. It's got generous proportions and adequate to accommodate, but not qualify as a higher intensity of use than, than what's surrounding. Second page shows the build-out condition of the property. Essentially, you have a building on one half and you have a parking on the other half. Basically, what you see in this photograph is what you're going to get. The building is going to stay, the parking is going to stay. That provides a benefit for the neighbors that are around it that are not going to be encumbered with, I'll say, the nuisances of new construction per se. So again, adaptive reuse, the most efficient type of land use there is. Third page shows the general land use characteristic, and you see a number of different colors here. Kingston Road is one of those roads here in town that have a varied mix of uses. We've got some red, which is non-residential. We've done a number of use variances along this strip here. We've got the gold, which is the residential. And then we've got the large ball fields in green and the recreation areas behind. B4 shows the reason why we're here. We're in the B4 zone. It is a business district. This particular land use, as far as I know, is not allowed in any zone here in Parsippany. I think the zoning just has not caught up with it. Back in 2014, the master plan actually recommended that adult care facilities be located in business zones. It just came out with, a couple of weeks ago, the brand-new 2020 master plan, which echoes that and says we should look at this in more detail to make sure that we apply appropriate conditions whenever this use comes into play in anticipation that the use will certainly continue to grow currency. The fifth page, I actually took it this morning just to show the condition of the property and the spacious parking lot, which would be devoted essentially to employees. There are about 41 spaces in this particular location, and you've heard about the shifts, where you've got about 30 people on the, on the peak shift in terms of the employees. The 12 or so vans could easily be accommodated within this particular space. And then finally, on the last page, you get a sense of the condition of the building. This is about the third or fourth time that I've testified on this particular site, and we always focus on those parking spaces that back out onto Kingston Road. Glad to hear they are going away as part of this application and taking away that, that condition. And I agree, I think it's more appropriate to go with the lower plantings here. It's more of a defensible space than the higher plantings that would hide the approved building. So in that regard, this is certainly going to improve the visual environment. With that foundation, the four parts of the test that are before the board, we're only really here dealing with the use variance to allow this non-permitted use in the B4 zone. It's a simplified four-part test whenever we're dealing with inherently beneficial uses. And the first part of the test, prong number one is to identify the public interest at stake. Again, senior care remains a fundamental public policy, and here in Parsippany, you actually have a higher percentage of seniors in comparison to the state average, so that's indicative of a, of a need as well. You've heard that this is an operator of a facility nearby that is at capacity and in fact overflowing. So in that regard, there's also another indicator of demand. Also, on the positive side, in the public interest at stake, we point to the aesthetic improvement here, the added viability of the space, and the fact that this is going to be efficient land use in form of adaptive reuse. Second part of the test is really what you did at the prior hearing and what has been the response this evening, to identify the potentially detrimental effects associated with this. At the heart of this is parking and whether the site has capacity to handle it. Again, as I ran through the numbers, 30 staff, 12 vans, gets to about 42 parking spaces at peak demand here. There are going to be 41, so the numbers stack up very nicely. And those 12 vans would accommodate, we have 15 seats per van, 180 persons. You've heard that the license here, the license capacity is for 175 clients, so there's a nice nexus there in terms of the way the numbers align. The parking demand is actually going to be less intense here than if this were filled up with another grocery store, which to my understanding is what the original use of this space was. So again, this is going to be a de-intensification of use in terms of what could be conceived under the zone, zone plan with this particular space. Other negative effects, security, health effects, nuisances have all been vetted out as part of the testimony that's on the record. Third part of the test are to identify any conditions that would mitigate or ameliate some of those negative effects. The designated drop-off area is a way for the clients to avoid walking throughout the lot unprotected. And any other conditions that may have been opposed by the board during the course of the hearing would go towards prong number three. Finally, the last part of the test, prong number four, just applies the balancing and whether that substantial weight on the positive side in the public interest at stake substantially outweighs the detriments. And I think given the way the applicant has been, application has been vetted here, clear weight is on the positive side, and in that regard, the statutory test is easily met. There is parking variance, it's an analytical variance, but the actual supply will meet the actual demand based on the testimony of Mr. Khan. And I think lastly, there's some relief needed for the overhead canopy, which will provide some weather protection. It's actually in a setback. Again, the benefit of providing that weather protection, the safety aspect that goes with it in particular, considering the clientele that will be here, safe movement into and out of the building outweighs any detriment. This is essentially going to be an open-sided structure. It's not a vestibule, it's just a canopy. So in the interest of adequate light and air, that's going to be met here as well. All said, I believe all the statutory aspects of the test are met, and approval is warranted.
Thank you very much.
Before we go any further, we're not going to hear the Mateo case tonight, Mr. Hef. So we're going to carry that case to our next meeting for further rescheduling of the meeting, providing that the applicant grants us an extension of time, okay? So I just don't want to see you hang around till 10 o'clock. We're not going to, we're not going to hear the case at this point. So I have a motion to carry case 1977 to March, March 4th?
For some reason, it's 67 on the agenda.
It's going to be carried to March 4th for, for further, I don't know if we could hear it on March 4th, but we're going to carry it to next week just to establish another date for the hearing.
So we don't have to be here?
Now, you can check with, check with Nora on the 5th, and she'll tell you when it's rescheduled for. Motion to that effect?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Nora, the only way he gets the extension is if he gives us an extension. Make sure, we don't want another Campbell issue, okay? All right. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have no further question for Mr. McDonough.
Any questions by the board of Mr. McDonough? Nothing? Neither side, nobody?
Nope.
Any members in the public have any questions of Mr. McDonough on the testimony given this evening? I hear none, see none.
That's it, Mr. Chairman?
No more of the witnesses?
That's no more. I mean, again, we're happy to answer any questions. I understand that we're going to be working with the board's professionals and the town's professionals, assuming it's, gets approved to finalize the plans to conform with the board's conditions and requirements, modifications on landscaping, canopy. But we're thrilled about this project. We hope the board sees fit to approve it. I think it's going to be a great addition to Parsippany.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none, see none.
Could I briefly say something about the...
You can testify if you, if you raise your hand, raise your hand.
Raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you're about to give before this board shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
Your name again, please?
Nicholas Hamjak from Lake Iowa.
Your address, please? You appeared on a different matter, we need to get it for the record.
26 O'Nida Avenue.
Go ahead, Mr. Hamjak.
In something like this, in a daycare center, I would like to think of it being only in the public interest, because I, I imagine it's a for-profit daycare center, that it, it's picked the right location in a previously developed, already developed area. So I just would like to say I'm for it because of that reason, because the location is adoptable and suitable for this daycare center.
Any questions of this witness? Any other members of the public who wish to speak in support of or in favor, against? No, oh, nothing. Do we need to go into conference?
You may want to talk about your conditions.
Okay, let's go into mo... I agree, I agree 100%. Mr. Berkowitz, you made the...
I move we want to conference.
And a second by Ms. Snyder. Yes, thank you. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Mr. Berkowitz, why don't you start off?
I have no, I think, I think this is a...
I was in this meeting last week when you were still...
I have no opposition to this matter. I think, I think the conditions that we talked about, that John mentioned, are viable and should be a part of the resolution.
Can we make the recommendation that the attorney drafts a resolution? We authorize the attorney to draft a resolution incorporating all the provisions that he can go over with the applicant's attorney, so that when we get, we get to that day, we will have everything in exactly the way we want it.
Absolutely.
That's fine? Okay. Anybody else have a comment? Mr. Perry?
I'm a little confused about the second door. I, I don't, I'm not clear about that.
That's a doorway for employees to come in, primarily for materials, food, whatever they need for their, it's not really a client entrance. Client entrance is over in the corner where they drop off.
I understand that. Our last meeting, if I recall, the owner of this daycare said that we'll use the second entrance for our clients to go out and just for a walk and things like that in that area. And that, that's where, you know, that was my understanding, that owner was not here when we discussed this thing, but I think we should make it clear, because they wanted to use the second door for their clients to walk and like for exercise.
Fresh air, yeah.
That's true, Mr. Perry, but I believe that that would is outweighed by perhaps discouraging the seniors from congregating in the front of the building. And so the sidewalk is going to be reduced so that if they do go for fresh air, it won't be along the entire length, or it'll be really limited to the one side of the building. I mean, we're amenable to providing the sidewalk along the entire length to allowing that space to be used for benches, for open air, you know, just the open air passive space. But it's outweigh, if it's outweighed by the safety concerns, then we'll follow...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't hear that today.
Realistically, the back of this building is up against the ball fields back there. And in terms of an open space, open area and a safe area, that's the best place.
And there's doors in the back.
Which will also encourage maintenance at the back of the building, so it'd just become, you know, an old chair deposit space.
There are, there are doors in the back of the building, three of them, right?
Yep.
Okay. So my question would be, why not have that the area where people would be recreation there? They shouldn't go out the front of this building and sit along Kingston Road at all. There's no use for that.
That's a great idea, and I'm sure it's going to be worked into the conformance plan set.
I mean, I would just, that doorway shouldn't encourage anybody going out there and standing on a sidewalk or anything. That's where I'm concerned.
Did we agree to benches in the front there?
We didn't agree to benches, did we?
No, it was just mentioned.
No.
Just mention it as like almost a passive space.
No benches.
No benches.
So we're requiring all of that passive area to be in the back?
Yes.
Not in the front?
Yes.
Sidewalk's gone in the front?
Well, part of the sidewalk has to be there for accessibility.
By the doors?
Yeah.
But not running the lane?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion by the board?
I like it.
Motion to come out of conference?
So move Snyder.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Someone like to, oh, someone make the motion that we have the attorney, authorize the attorney to draw up a resolution in keeping with all the points that we've brought up.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Laura, call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Passad?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Willink?
Yes.
The alliance is granted.
Thank you very much.
Wish you guys the best of luck in your new venture.
Thank you so much.
You too.
I have.
Okay, here we go. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you. Would you have a time we could break?
Five-minute break, I'm sorry. Five-minute break while we set up, okay? Are we going to hear this whole thing?
We're going to hear the whole thing.
This is the first case I can remember. Okay. You may proceed, Mr. O'Neill.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joseph O'Neill, Garefalo O'Neil Rogirio, here on behalf of the applicant's Mulberry Development, New York Renaissance Group. This is a application to take down a dilapidated structure on a property next to a gas station on Littleton Road that's going to be replaced with a mixed-use building. Given the hour, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and get right to my witnesses. With me is Mr. Mark Walker.
Mr. Walker, if you could please stand, raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you're about to give before this board shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Your name, Mark, M-A-R-K?
M-A-R-C-W-A-L-K-E-R. I'm a licensed professional engineer, and I testified in front of this board.
And all of your licenses are in good standing?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you. Mr. Walker, could you describe, please, the application? This, before the board, we have an exhibit that we're going to mark as exhibit A1 for this evening. I'll hand it out. Do you have it up on the board also? I do.
Is it already been marked as A1, Mr. O'Neill?
No, I've been marking it as A1.
Absolutely.
Just to bring the board up to speed on the existing conditions, the property is known as 1209 Littleton Road, which is a county jurisdiction, county road. We're proposing a 2,304 square foot building on a 34,000 square foot, 921 square foot lot, which is about 0.88 tenths of an acre. And the lot's rectangular, 92 feet wide by about 378 feet deep. Front's on Littleton Road, which is in our section, is a straight, flat road, which has exceptional site distance. We have a gas station that's to the north, as you can see on exhibit A1. And further north, we have a church that's located, we have, we have the Brook Lawn Middle School, which is located to the rear of the subject property. And then across the street into the south, we have some single-family residential homes. We have had wetlands delineated at the rear of the property. It's been indicated by the DEP that the wetlands are intermediate resource value, which indicates that we'll have a 50-foot wetland buffer on the wetlands. And you can see the dark green area is the wet, the wetland area. We have a little piece here, and the next color green is the transition area that we're proposing, and the non-regulated areas are the lighter green areas that you can see on exhibit A1. Topography is gently sloping from Littleton Road down to the wetlands. The average grade is less than 5%. The property's relatively flat. Currently, there is an existing dilapidated dwelling and a driveway on the property as it exists. The remainder of the property to the rear is the wetlands and wood it is. Property, is all the properties surrounding the subject property are located in the R3 zone. There are some current, pre-existing non-conforming situations related to structures on the property as well as the property itself. The property is 92.27 feet wide, where 100 feet's required in the R3 zone. And the existing house is 4.3 feet from the sideline, where 10 feet's required. What we're proposing is to use the slope of the property and have the building designed with two stories in the front and having three stories at the, the back of the building. The commercial space would be located and accessed at the front of the building, and we have 10 parking spaces proposed at the front of the building. And we have an access drive that's 24 feet wide that leads to the rear of the building, where we have nine parking spaces. And there's a separate entrance in the back of the building for residential access. We have two, two one-bedroom apartments proposed at the lower level, entering in from the rear. And then there's also staircase that goes up through the building, and there would be two more, two-bedroom apartments above the commercial space. So we're proposing four total apartments and one commercial space. We have shown on our plan for retail use, which actually fits under the commercial or... or personnel services, use is not specified in the ordinance. But under the parking that we're providing, the space that we have, we could also support a deli, bakery, a professional office or a combination of a smaller medical office along with professional office to make the parking work. Also, a 34-seat restaurant could be provided with the parking that we have available. So the applicant at this time doesn't know who's going to ultimately lease the space. We want to keep those uses viable. Those uses would be supported with the parking that we have provided. We actually have one additional parking space on the site. As I mentioned, we've provided parking for the residents in the rear. And we've also provided a handicap parking space that's ADA compliant relative to the front door. Going through the list of site improvements that we have for the site, 24-foot wide access drive from Littleton Road, which meets the county standards and requirements. 10 parking spaces in the front of the building, nine parking spaces in the rear, a six-foot sidewalk at the front of the building that allows the cars to overhang two feet and still provide a sidewalk that's four feet wide. We've clustered our air conditioning units at the rear of the building. And we've also provided a common mailbox at the rear of the building. And there's a concrete walkway to the rear door. We've also provided a dumpster area that's located at the back of the parking lot, 11 foot by 12 foot, which will be... Which is not quite large enough to handle a dumpster. I've spoken to sanitary company. He felt that it would be difficult to get a larger garbage truck in there that can pick up a trash can and dump it in. So we've gone with these totes. And we've shown a tote design on our plan. And the totes would be animal poop or bear poop, so animals can't get in it. And the dumpster area is also going to have a fence around it with a gate. Relative to our storm water, we have proposed a storm drain located in the back left corner, which will collect water from the parking lot. That storm water will be directed to six underground 1,000-gallon drywells. In addition, the roof runoff will be collected and discharged into the drywells as well. The storm water is designed in accordance with the township requirements. Project's considered to be a minor project relative to stormwater rules and regulations. So the state stormwater regulations do not come into play. The stormwater is then designed to meet the township requirements. So relative to the grading and the layout of the building, we have our parking lot, which meets the five-foot setback requirements, meets the setback requirements to the front of the property. We have a small two-and-a-half-foot retaining wall proposed on each side of the front parking bay in front of the building. And then at the rear, we also have another retaining wall that averages about three feet high. We do have one section in the back corner where the wall is five feet high. And we've proposed a small guide rail in that area where the wall is slightly higher. Relative to landscaping, we've proposed evergreens down the common property lines and additional evergreens in the dumpster area. With respect to lighting, we have one freestanding light fixture at the front parking bay. And then we have three additional lights that are on the building themselves. And the light fixtures will be approximately 15 feet from grade and they will be LED fixtures. With respect to signage, we're proposing signage, freestanding sign and signs that would be on the building themselves. We're proposing one 50-square-foot freestanding sign, which is between the island, the access drive and the front parking bay. It meets all the general sign requirements. With respect to the building-mounted signs, once the sign area calculation is performed on the building, it's been calculated that a sign of 72 square feet could be put on this building. It's proposed to have two 36-square-foot signs in the anticipation that we'll have two commercial users within the building. So the two signs is actually non-conforming for freestanding sign where only one's allowed. However, the anticipation of having two commercial uses is the reason for the two signs proposed. With respect to environmental, as I mentioned, we do have, and you can see graphically on Exhibit A1, the buffer area and the wetlands that approximately half of the property will not be disturbed. We've also filed for a transition area waiver permit with the DEP that allows us to modify the wetland buffer. The wetlands buffer comes up into the parking lot as the wetlands have currently been delineated. We're proposing to slightly reduce the buffer in one area of the parking lot and then behind the other area of the parking lot will be increasing the buffer. So there's a balance ultimately of the one buffer. We are currently waiting for approval from the DEP for that permit. But we have been told verbally that everything looks good and it's a matter of them going through the paperwork to process that and issue it. Now, under this restriction from the DEP, when you go for a transition area averaging permit, the modified wetland buffer line becomes the limit of a conservation easement. So the rear portion of this property would ultimately become a conservation easement that would have to be dedicated to the DEP. And lastly, my testimony is really quick, trying to get done here. But lastly, with respect to zoning, we have a planner tonight that's going to talk about Mr. McDonough. That's going to be talking about the use variance that's proposed for the property. Our variances or bulk variances are relatively minimal. Within the R3 zone, we're allowed 30% impervious coverage. And with the commercial project, we're providing 37.5% impervious coverage. So we're relatively close for the R3 zone. And if we were to look at this project as though it would be a commercial zone, it'd be substantially below any impervious cover requirements for a commercial zone. I'd also like to note that we've complied with the height requirements within the R3 zone. We stayed at the 35-foot height requirement. And our building coverage is relatively small relative to what's allowed in the R3 zone. We're allowed 15% and we're proposing 6.6% building coverage. So our building coverage is relatively small. So that's my direct testimony. Be glad to take any questions.
Mr. Walker, I have a question, of course. Regarding the signage, you indicated that the signage was compliant, but it's compliant with different zone standards.
Right. It's compliant with general commercial sign requirements in the ordinance. And obviously, commercial signs are not allowed within a residential zone. But I believe that that falls under the use variance criteria, which I think Mr. McDonough will discuss.
He will. But I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Do you have an architect?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so he'll tell us whether there's going to be an elevator in this building?
He'll describe the interior of the building in code compliance.
Okay, good. Any questions of this witness by the board?
Where are those 6,000-gallon drywells going to be?
The 6,000... The 6,000... 1,000-gallon drywells are going underneath the parking lot.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions on the left?
Yeah, have you looked at Morris County Planning Board report?
Yes.
And do you have any comments on that?
We've addressed their comments and we've sent the reply back into the county.
How did you address the three-year moratorium on pavement disturbance on Littleton?
Right. So we're discussing options with the county on that. We've come up with an alternate plan if they won't let us, you know, disturb the pavement area.
What is that plan?
So that plan, the sewer lines across the street, we would direct drill underneath the pavement to connect into the sewer main. So that wouldn't create any disturbance of the pavement. We would look to utilize the existing water line and gas line for connections into the building.
Are we going to have someone else testify about the signs? That's not you.
The signs, I can testify about further if you're looking for detail.
Yeah. Why don't we do that?
We have shown on our plan... It's on the last sheet, Sheet 9. We show the building-mounted sign as well as the freestanding sign.
Can you just give us the dimensions of the freestanding sign, please, Mr. Walker?
The freestanding sign has a maximum height of 15 feet. The bottom of the sign would be 10 feet above the ground. The sign itself would be 10 feet, 10 feet wide by 5 feet high.
You guys have the old dogs in the world, you get them out of the shrink.
30 by 42. You won't be on our laptop screens here, so if we would move into the 20th century, we don't need all this paper. We need them to buy computers so it's less... Mr. O'Neill?
Okay.
Save your clients a lot of money, right?
Sure would.
They may even want to buy us the... Chip in and buy us the computers.
Maybe somebody else.
The freestanding sign, how tall it... That's 15 feet tall?
Yeah, 15 feet tall and 10 feet wide.
Where's it going?
It's going in the front island, next... Between the access drive and the front parking lot.
And facing the traffic.
Facing traffic.
Right. So you can see it. It'll be a double-sided sign, so you can see it heading south and heading north.
Lighted?
It will be lighted. It'll be internally lit with non-glaring lights.
For how long? What are the hours? I mean, obviously, it's hard to tell because you have an unknown tenant there, right?
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that question.
Perhaps Mr. McDonough can answer that question a little later.
Will this retail facility be able to hold like a 7-Eleven or something like that? Or is it...
It will be able to handle a convenience store.
Convenience store.
Yep. That's correct.
And the parking and the traffic and every traffic around the building would be able to support?
The traffic would all be in the front of the building. So what we've done, we really wanted to separate the commercial traffic from the resident traffic, from the resident parking. So the resident parking is at the back of the building, which is at the lower level. And the front parking area is the parking for commercial space.
Do you envision a business that would require tractor-trailer deliveries?
We do not. We do not. We haven't provided for the ability to have a tractor-trailer. A lot of these smaller retail-type stores typically have things delivered to the site by dams that can park it within a parking space.
So a large commercial chain restaurant, like a Dunkin' Donuts or the 7-Eleven that the chairman mentioned, where they're doing deliveries by these large trucks? That would be something that the applicant couldn't lease to because of the site restriction?
They would... If he leased to them, they'd have to be a restriction that they couldn't be delivering goods with those trucks.
Thank you.
That's a residential house across the street facing it?
That's a residential house.
Yeah.
That's correct. Yeah, our footprint is 2,000 square feet.
The... I assume the front of the building's going to have a sign, correct?
Building has a sign.
That'll be lighted also?
It's at the... Yes, it's at the lower... On the same sheet, Sheet 9. It's on the lower left-hand corner.
I have a question. Is the proposal for one retail space or two? Is it going to be split in half?
We're anticipating two. About two 1,000-square-foot spaces.
And you have enough parking for two?
Yes. We actually have an additional parking space.
You're designing this for two or anticipating already two tenants?
We're anticipating two tenants.
We don't know who?
It could be... No. No, we don't know who it is. It's a relatively small space going to be leased out to independent companies.
I have a silly question, Paulie, but you're requesting the variance here to have the commercial business there. If you didn't have that, you wouldn't need that variance, right? So... Huh?
No, it's a multi-family development without the commercial use. So the R3 zone is for a single-family residential. So we'd still be in the variance.
Can you describe access to the trash area? It seems like there's a foot and a half path.
Yes.
Is that going to be wide enough or is it scraping the cars or what?
We've actually... We've shown between the mirrors, there's four feet. And the totes are about two-and-a-half feet wide. So we've provided enough room to get the totes in and out of the garbage area without hitting cars.
So how wide is that aisle?
The total... Well, you've got room to open your car. So there's four to five feet between the... Between the two cars to be able to get a tote, a two-and-a-half-foot-wide tote through that area.
What's the dimensions on those parking spaces?
The... Well, the parking spaces are nine by 18, but we've added in an extra foot and a half in between two spaces that line up with the garbage area.
Okay. So you're assuming when the guy pulls into that space that he's not going to go over on that... Next to that line?
We can add in another white line like they do in, you know, shopping malls to ensure that the parking gets done properly.
That would make sense, wouldn't it?
Sure. Anybody else have questions?
The trash container in the back, it's small, correct? But it's large enough to handle multifamilies and commercial?
Yeah.
How frequently is that going to be picked up and emptied?
Well, that's going to be a management issue. So if they get a commercial tenant in there and the dumpsters are filling up quickly, they're going to have to collect more than once a week to pick the garbage. But they're, you know, they're large. They're 96 gallons for the garbage. There's four of them and then there's four 50-gallon recyclables containers. So they're pretty big.
If there's something like that, is good enough for like Dunkin' Donuts or something? But they generate a lot of garbage and...
Right.
I feel that's not enough because you have to dedicate some to the residential.
They said Dunkin' Donuts is probably a non-tenant because they can't meet the tractor-trailer.
Would be able to bring them.
They also talk about the restaurants. Restaurants generate a lot of...
Definitely. Well, it may not have enough parking if it's a restaurant also.
Well, we had that limitation. We had it limited by seats. 34 seats.
So you could have a small restaurant.
Yes.
Small restaurant.
Very small.
Very small.
And the garbage... The garbage could be picked up on a daily basis, you know.
Where do you... So you have a lot of parking in the back, so the residential's will have some of those spots. Overflow from the front will go to the back.
The residential will have all the spaces in the back except for one.
Where are the employees parking?
Employees will park... They can have one employee's space in the back or they can park in the front.
How many employees would be in a restaurant, plus 34 seats?
The parking calculations don't discern between that. It just says that for every... It just says that for every, for every, for every parking space, you're allowed three seats.
What about medical?
Medical, you can do medical, but it would be about a 500 square foot space, and the remainder would have to be professional office. Medical is at a parking rate of one per 150. And we've laid this out based on one per 200, so with the extra parking space that we have, you'd be able to do five, about 500 square feet of medical office and...
Well, it's not very much, is it?
No.
Six, sixteen hundred square feet of professional.
In this whole, the conversation of, um, I mean, the residential is one thing, but the, the commercial side of it is like, no one really knows, but there's a whole bunch of things you can't do, or you might be able to do with a variance, but it might be very tight. The 7-Eleven, 7-Eleven or Dunkin' Donuts is questionable. Medical office is questionable. Professional office you could do. A lawyer, an architect, an accountant, that would work, right? That would fit right in.
Yes.
A small can, a small convenience store?
Yes.
Would have enough parking?
Correct.
Small convenience store.
Yep.
Lawyers depending on what their practice is. The immigration lawyer might have a few business.
Deli, deli would work, bakery, those are just the criteria.
And you're confident that with whatever formula you're using in real life, that's enough to manage this parking?
These are the, these are the numbers.
I know, but real world, real world scenarios.
It all depends on the, on the use. If you have...
Successful business.
If you have a crazy successful business, there's, there tends to be parking issues, right? In any, any real life...
I'm just thinking even moderately successful here in this lot.
Mm-hmm.
If all the, if that whole back row is reserved, might as well.
That may not be a tenant that would want this space.
Even the back row would work.
Yeah, they'll take your sponsor of the day.
It's really a self-policing situation, isn't it, Mr. Walker? I mean, you're not going to get the large franchisees that are like the 7-Elevens, the Dunkin' Donuts, the McDonald's, the, those types of places that are delivering to different locations in one delivery through these very large trucks.
I wasn't even talking about trucks. Actual parking patrons, cars.
Again, that's also self-managing too, because they're not going to want to be in that space if they don't have enough parking to satisfy their customers. And the manager of the, of the facility is not going to want to have a business in there that's going to be overflowing the parking. He's going to have to deal with complaints from the tenants.
And we'll actually bring up a representative. We'll bring up a representative from management after Mr. Walker stops. Talk a little bit more about their vision for the site.
Are the signs for the tenants going to be marked for tenants only? Were those about eight or so nine parking spots?
Oh, yeah. We would, yes, we would mark, we have four units, we would definitely mark four of the spaces for the residents, as designed parking spaces.
I thought you said all but one are for the tenants.
Yes, that's correct.
So you are going to mark...
Right. It would be nice like, so the business operates during the day. Most people, we have four tenants, the likelihood is that half of the people that work within the building are going to be working in the day. Maybe all of them will be working in the day. It does leave some flexibility to have some open parking spaces when the residential use is not peaking and the commercial use has a peak use.
So a small deli on a Saturday during lunch, and the residents run out to do an errand, and they come back and all their spots are gone.
Well, they have, they have their one dedicated spot.
Their own spots. Because the front is full, now I'm going to go in the back, there's an open spot, residents comes back in, you know? It just seems to me that if we don't very carefully mark those and tow those cars, you're going to have problems.
Well, the way the, the way the parking calculations work out is that within the parking calculations, there is, parking is some for the unit and some is for guests, parking, right? So each unit doesn't get two parking spaces just for themselves. So there is some, there is some guest parking involved in there. So if you're, if you're concerned about that, we could mark six spaces for resident parking only, and that would take care of a tenant that may have two cars and help out, and then we also have open spaces to the guests.
Just to clarify, the green shaded area of the dark and the lighter green, the wetlands in transition, that's undisturbed, so all those trees that we don't see are, they're all there?
Right. Like I mentioned in my early testimony, basically from this green line track?
Yep.
None of that will be disturbed.
Okay.
And the school's back here is, it's also a large buffer. So we're really, we're not going back quite as far as the gas station next to us.
Any other questions to this witness by the board? Board's okay? Members of the public?
One question. Did your environmentalist, because I wrote initially that this was incomplete because we didn't, we weren't taking the risk that your environmentalist is correct.
Our environmentalist spoke with Chris Quazzo, who had done the field investigation, and he agreed with the line, and he also agreed that there would be a fifty-foot transition area. So...
There, there are no streams behind this property or through this property?
There's no stream behind this.
Have they got a official waiver from a riparian requirement?
We, I don't believe that he filed for a verification for a riparian buffer.
Don't you think that should be done?
Uh, it could be done if you're concerned about it, but...
I just had an application, it wasn't my application, that during a heavy rain, there was a little rivulet running down the side of a steep area. They slapped on a 150-foot either side right area.
Right. In this case, I'm really not concerned about it because...
After, I wanted to tell you, after they had granted the LOI.
Right.
Six months after.
Right. But here's why I'm not concerned about it. The wetland line is located here. Our improvements are more than fifty feet from the edge of the wetland line. We're, we're in parsonia, we're not draining to trout mangels or trout production streams in this area. If we were draining to the Rockaway River, it'd be a concern because there's a potential for...
Same circumstance. I'm just, I'm just raising it because at some point, you're going to have to sign off that you have all your DEPs and how to get your building permit. And you're relying on your environmentalist, and I'm just telling you my war story.
Right. I hear you. I'm not concerned about it, and we can get a letter from our environmentalist to offer his opinion as well.
I think we're, we're not going to wrap it up tonight, so I think it's a good idea.
Nora, you got a carry date?
April 22nd.
April 27th?
Second.
Second, April 22nd. Mr. O'Neil, is that acceptable? Sir? Can I help you?
Um, I should be in place to go.
Not, not until we get to that point. We're only in receiving the testimony of the applicant. Once the testimony applicant is completed and questions are asked of the applicant, I will give members of the public an opportunity to talk. Feel free to ask questions of this witness now, but we don't take testimony from members of the public until the application is completed by the applicant. Okay?
Well, I mean, I...
Sir? Sir, so you can't do it, can't do it like that. Come up here, use a microphone, identify yourself, because this all has to go on record, okay?
And again, this is simply for purposes of asking this witness questions.
Sir, I'm Lou Gliotta. I'm going to...
I'm sorry, I, I wasn't ready. What was your name again, please?
Lou Gliotta.
G?
G, G, L, I, O, T, A.
Take the mic, please.
And your address, please?
20 East Delbrook.
Twenty-eight?
Delbrook Road.
We need to get it on record.
Take the, you can take the microphone out of the thing.
Okay, there you go. So right now, my only question would be, are you absolutely certain that there's not a stream at the bottom of the hill there where the wetlands are?
We're going to check in with our environmentalist.
Okay.
You got a phone?
Go ahead and answer it.
Try to answer it. I'll form a question.
Very good.
What was that date again, Mr. Chairman?
April 22nd.
So we would ask that be done without further notice?
Without further notice, and you'll...
We'll grant all extensions through the end of April.
Okay, you got all that, Charlie? Okay. Motion to that effect?
So, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Okay. We have any other business to deal with? Motion to adjourn?
Civil, designer.
All in favor? Anyone opposed?
Okay.
April 22nd.
I'm sorry. I'm getting drunk too. Yeah. No, no, I can, it's just that I'm, I get so much...